It's just not.
All right, call to orders.
I believe this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Paul.
Mr. Burdah?
Yeah.
Mr. Fernandez, Mr. Gray?
Sir.
Please make name.
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Parides?
Here.
For what?
I don't think anybody told them that.
Just Jim, I remember that first.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May fourteen, twenty twenty four, regular meetings. May twenty nine, twenty twenty four, special budget.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the May fourteen, two thousand twenty four, regular meeting.
Second?
Second.
Session? Favor?
All right.
I don't think you should sneak.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the May twenty nine, two thousand twenty four, special budget.
Second?
Second.
Session? Favor?
Hi.
I'm move. I'm gonna start way off one.
Very day, move to authorize a non-budgeted appropriation of eight hundred thousand from the general fund, an assigned fund balance to the transportation alternatives grant.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Are we gonna, is anything gonna be presented to us or?
Well, there was a zip file, one or two files. I figured I would turn it over to Jim. Jim did all of the legwork from identifying the grant, identifying the various opportunities, roads and other things that could be done, working to develop the budget, all of which was included in what I emailed out. Jim, if there's any you want me to pull up on the screen or if you want to pull it up, you can certainly do that too. If you just wanna see.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if they have it in their packet, that's fine. Just that, you know, if you want to pull something up, I would pull up the, the general, you know, sidewalks map that shows the one, shows the sidewalks that we're proposing to, to, uh, to do as part of this grant. So, um, yeah, I'll just give you background. I mean, development identifies the, you know, uh, connections, you know, development of missing sidewalk pieces as, as a, you know, action item. And as you all know, we've been working on this for quite a while, uh, doing sidewalk pieces when we could get grants to do so. A lot of the works to date has been focused on kind of going from the towns, from, from the Kensington Center and the TOD, the train station, and moving outward from there. Um, and so, the, um, this particular grant, and then, you know, obviously when we were doing that, we're, you know, connecting things like town hall, as you remember, didn't, there was no sidewalks to town hall and, and, uh, and the variety of things. So, missing pieces all over the place. So, we've been doing it incrementally. And we did get a eight hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant from DOT. It was announced last fall to do five additional sidewalk pieces. So, as you know, we, we got approval for the funds for the design work on that, and we selected a consultant, so we're working on that. So, this opportunity arose. We've been successful with, uh, especially, you know, Mike and the roads, especially with, and, and, you know, bridges, with CROG in terms of funding sources. This is something that comes up only periodically. It's a grant. It's, it's basically a federal grant, but it starts at CROG, um, and then they'll make recommendations to Connecticut DOT, and then they'll select the projects that'll be funded. It's for the twenty twenty six to twenty thirty fiscal year, so it's not, not a tomorrow opportunity, um, but it is a, a large, you know, an opportunity to apply for a large amount of money for sidewalks. Like, uh, again, the connectivity grant we got in the fall was seven hundred and eighty thousand, and this, this, we could apply for up to three point two million dollar grant. So, we had the conversation with the council, um, over two meetings, and they authorized the submission of the application. Um, we then went to the council, uh, regarding funding. We had the town meeting, council approved it, and, and it comes, it comes to you last. Um, in the meantime, from a process point of view, uh, there was like a CROG that was the first cut. Well, they only had seven applications, so there was no first cut. And then yesterday, they had a meeting, we made a presentation, there were six out of seven. So, you know?
We lost you a little bit there. What Jim was saying is they forced range to seven, and Berlin's request ended up six out of seven. So.
That's, I'm confused. That's a different grant?
That's this, that's this. Yes, as they go through the process, they're, they're then submitting it, so they had to, they had to kind of prioritize those who requested, because there's only a pool, was it nine million dollars, Jim?
About nine million dollars, right.
So, they had to figure out all those that were submitted. It was in excess of nine, and therefore they had to force range. We ended up six out of seven. Now, towards the bottom. Sorry, Jim, you were cutting out. I was just trying to catch him up on what you were saying.
Thank you, thank you. So, yeah, so that wasn't good news, but again, what, what CROG is telling us is that they, they'll submit the other projects as, as alternates that DOT can fund in the future if they choose. So, that's kind of where we're at now. I'll just talk a little bit about the application. The focus of this application was on, on sidewalks near schools. Uh, we talked about safe, safe routes to school, worked with the Board of Education, the Police Department. Um, and we hadn't had like, I would say, a sidewalk master plan, so we had to do some work on kind of envisioning where, where we needed sidewalks in the future. And, uh, within the budget, we felt that sidewalks near the Three School Cluster of McGee and Willard and High School, and then we picked up additional sidewalks near Hubbard because we could afford that. Um, we'd like to do some sidewalks near Griswold as well. But the, um, you know, we got some feedback from the council. I think ultimately, if we were to, you know, we're to do this project, we'll probably have an opportunity to fine tune the sidewalks. Uh, we also had an eight twenty four review by planning and zoning last week, and they unanimously endorsed the project. But, you know, they also had some suggestions about, you know, how, can you do this sidewalk instead of that sidewalk? But the idea of it is, is to do the sidewalks there near the schools to give children, you know, a safe route to school, but also we realize that we have a lot of other facilities at, in near schools, athletic facilities, you know, we have the Little League facilities on, on Norton Road, et cetera. Um, you know, the pool complexes next to, next to Hubbard, which, you know, again, we might redo the pool complex into something else, but there's a lot of facilities that the town has. So, it, it, it also provides, you know, families in those areas, the opportunity to walk to, to all these other facilities. And we also recognize that it provides walkability for additional neighborhoods to go into the Kensington Center area, the TOD area, the train station. Also, we have sidewalks on Norton Road, which will reach Bicentennial Park, and then from Bicentennial Park, we have, are, we have trail system with the Metacoma Loop Trail that connects the Metacoma Trail, in which you can walk from Long Island Sound to New Hampshire. So, it, it provides a lot of connectivity, makes the town a more walkable community. Um, I had, I'm not in town often, but I was, I was in town over, you know, before Memorial Day, and I was driving near the schools at that time, and I saw things of that nature. So, some people are already, uh, are already taking advantage of this, you know, sidewalks we do have. This would just expand the opportunities, um, in the future. So, that's kind of an overview of where we are, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
So, Jim, uh, for six out of seven, what does that mean? I mean, so there's a certain pool of money, right?
Right.
Doesn't, you don't get three million, or does everybody get something, or how do they?
No, no. Six out of seven is not good. And, you know, so it doesn't bode well.
So, Jim, just, just one, one, uh, group of money or one pound?
I think it depends on how much you've kind of submitted. So, not everybody submitted for three point two million of that max. So, if, if they submitted for less, you might aggregate, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but they might aggregate two or three to get to the amount of money they're supposed to.
Yeah, so it's probably gonna be three or, you know, like four or five probably, I would guess. And, you know, the, it was tough competition. The, what we found is that, um, you know, the other, the towns that were higher ranked, um, you know, many of their projects were part of the regional multi-use trail system, you know, develop, you know, um, constructing pieces that are missing of that, that kind of has more of a regional impact, whereas ours is a local impact. And also, you know, they take it into account factors like, um, you know, community demographics. So, uh, like a Hartford would have a higher ranking than we do, or Bloomfield, and, and various factors of that nature. So, uh, and, and also some of the towns were, were, you know, more advanced in their planning process. So, part of, you know, what makes a successful grant application is being more advanced in the planning process. But this is an opportunity we saw. It was a, you know, it was a priority in the planning, conservation and development. We brought it to the council. They said, you know, take a shot at it, and we did. And this is where we are.
Thank you. Questions? Jerry? Um, Jim, you said this is for funding during what, twenty six to thirty?
Yes.
So, is, is, is it imperative that we have the appropriation in place now, even though it's not gonna be for?
Well, the problem is if we win the award, we would, if we don't appropriate it now, it would have essentially undisclosed eight hundred thousand dollar liability produced in the financial statements without telling the market that, hey, by the way, eight hundred thousand of our unassigned fund balance wouldn't have to be, you could assign it, you could, you could put it that way, but either way, you're gonna be taking it from the same, you don't necessarily appropriate it, but if you assign it, it's effectively doing the same thing. You're taking it off, putting it outside. But at least it would, from a financial standpoint, disclosure, when we go out to the market, um, we're not withholding something that I would characterize as highly material, even without a spell or some money we owe in the future, we don't tell people, would not be perceived well by the street.
Is it possible for us to approve this tonight and not get the grant and then have it?
If we don't get the grant, then this can't spend its own, you're, you would be appropriating.
But I mean, we might get it back, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, if we don't get the grant, the council of our clients could reverse, sort of like the bonding when I came to you the last meeting or the meeting before, to deauthorize what was left on it, and because you both have to do it, if either one of you says, no, we change our mind, or we didn't get the grant full of that. In fact, the next one has a transfer. You had agreed to appropriate fund balance for a variety of projects last December, one of which was trying to secure state funding to clean up, um, Silver Lake. We didn't win that grant, so now we're asking to repurpose that money for the senior center generator. So, we definitely need to fund.
But this eight hundred thousand dollars will be, in essence, locked up until, I, I'm honestly, I, I'm looking at this map, and the red lines are the sidewalks that they're talking about. We're talking about walking to school, walking to the center of town. I don't see any sidewalks being put in this, anywhere near schools from the center of town, where anybody's gonna walk to school from those locations. I mean, I'm sorry, but, oh, a sidewalk that runs from Meadow Lane to Norton Road, I, I don't see schoolchildren walking down that road. I just, to me, I would rather, we have so many projects that went down the fighting. I would rather just pass on this one, keep the eight hundred thousand dollars available to use, and just go on from there. I, I don't see this being a productive project. That's, that's my feelings on this.
Well, I, I, I mean, when I looked at the map, I guess, and I read the Board of Education, not requirements, but guidelines around children walking to school, I'm thinking to myself, you know, the, the thing's like twenty years outdated, because it basically centers at a child in kindergarten can walk up to a mile. What parent in their right mind, in this environment, is gonna allow their child to walk a mile to school on a, on that school?
Actually, it was two miles.
Right, high school is up to two and a half anyway. So, I guess, are they gonna, if this happened, is Board of Education going to eliminate bus routes? And it now becomes mandatory that children are going to walk to school, or are they gonna continue to be bused? If they're gonna continue to be bused, it's not a safety issue. So, the problem we're trying to solve is not a problem, if they're still gonna be bused. And again, I can't imagine a kindergarten kid walking. I would never let my kid do that. And I can't imagine any parent that would let their kid do that, but. So, I, you know, I, I just don't see the big value unless there's a little bit of a return on it too. If we're, if we're gonna make a safe environment, is, is the town gonna eliminate some bus routes and things like that, and they're actually gonna be used, walkable paths?
And there are no sidewalks being added near schools.
Well, they were all within the one mile radius.
Right, but we don't.
And it's like connecting, connecting, uh, dead end cul-de-sacs and stuff like that.
Yeah, there was a couple out there that were four or five miles off the street, and the sidewalk walked dead end circle. That's just not put off the base, not a value, even if we're getting the grant.
Yeah, I, I have to think, you know, that with the way that we have not been funding our capital, given regular budget, relying on the fund balance, we're, we're in essence, re-prioritizing this ahead of other projects that we've been talking about funding through capital. So, I don't know how that just would jump ahead of, of some of the other priorities that we, we've looked at. This, this already is going to the council, Jim?
Yes.
And what was their reaction to it? Basically, they passed it, right?
Right.
Because of?
Yeah, they had questions, but they passed it.
And what, what do you think they passed it? I talked to Mark yesterday. So, Mark's thinking that we're just kicking it down the road a little bit, and they can really decide later, with him not really understanding the implication of tying up eight hundred thousand dollars fund balance, you know, for, for what period? Cause he had comments to me about like, you know, one of the concerns that, that they raised to some degree was because of that this is a federal grant, I guess there's some different requirements for the, uh, for pay to the contractors that we use. Somebody indicated that it was like about four times as expensive as, because of the prevailing wage issues and things like that. So, they had, still had some questions, but again, they think they're gonna go back later on. If we got the grant, we can say, you may not do it. You may opt to take a hundred thousand, you know, a million of it, or five hundred thousand, do selectively. They thought, I don't know if they can or not, that they'll fine tune this whole thing, and this just gets us, you know, the opportunity to, to do that. But again, that's the tying up the eight hundred thousand dollars. That's the concern for us.
Yeah.
They don't have, they don't look at it that way.
Putting the projects down, but the problem is still tying up the eight hundred thousand dollars while all this is going on. And I don't, if we're gonna cut it down, at that, at that point, why are we even? Especially with number six on the list, I don't want to tie up the eight hundred thousand dollars. I don't think it's just.
Hey, Jim, I know that you proposed, you know, red lines on this map here.
Yes, yes.
I mean, is that, um, I guess I'm just, you know, I have mixed emotions on how effective, you know, this map is, you know what I mean, and people using it, and it's a, you know, it's a judgment really, you know what I'm saying? So, I just, I don't know how to make a decision based on even this map itself, you know what I'm saying? Uh, is it gonna be used? I mean, I, all I know is that I bet you ninety percent of students are either bused or, or driven to school, or even probably higher. You know, so I'm saying to myself, you know, we wanna commit eight hundred thousand dollars for maybe sidewalks we don't really use? I don't know, John. That's my question in my mind. Well.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can fine tune the actual sidewalks we do, and, you know, I think, like I, I tried to stress that the, I think the sidewalks have benefits beyond walking to school. Um, you know, again, we chose the theme of walking to school because it fit the grant criteria. And, and, you know, we thought it also worked for us. I mean, for example, you were doing this, you were proposing the sidewalk on Worthington Ridge. Uh, you know, it seems to me to make sense that, yeah, we have our historic district. We we have a sidewalks on a lot of it, but we don't have sidewalks on some of it. You know, we gotta do that at some point. And, and so, it's, it's, like I said, it's, it's like that. Uh, and, you know, again, we, we, we responded to the opportunity, but we, it didn't do, you know, we didn't do months of advanced planning to select these. We have, we've been continuing to work on this. And, you know, whether we go forward with, uh, this application or, or, you know, or not, whether you approve it or not, I think it's worthwhile to have a sidewalk plan for the town so we can look at, you know, decide which sidewalks are, are the highest priority and, and look for future grants if, of this type or other, or connectivity, which we've gotten in the past, and we're planning on applying for next year in the spring. And it'll give us an idea, you know, give us a, a, an opportunity to get input. So, we're, yeah, we're thinking, I'm working with a consultant now about, you know, getting an interactive map that people will be able to say, you know, we like sidewalks here, we don't like sidewalks there. And also, we're thinking, you know, post, you put the posters at the, um, like at the library and such, where people can give us input. And, you know, it takes some time, you know, we've done what we can do now. But, uh, to find out how people feel about sidewalks. I mean, I think, oh, you know, be, as a generalization, it would come a long ways with sidewalks. A lot, a lot more people are using the sidewalks than they used to. People want a walkable community, uh, they wanna be connected. Um, but this will give us an opportunity to vet that, you know, uh, as far as the priorities of different sidewalks.
We need the figure of eight hundred thousand, is that the projected cost of what you wanted?
The projected cost just shot at four million dollars. So, there's a, I mean, so three point two million is the max of the grant, so eight hundred thousand would fill the gap.
So.
One of the, one of the things circulated was the, it was a pretty detailed cost analysis that was.
It was in the.
WMC prepared their cost estimate for us, and they, they've worked with us on other sidewalk projects.
Okay.
So, they, uh.
So, Kevin, what's the timing? I mean, we have to even make a decision today on the eight hundred thousand? Well, we got a lot of fun. Just out of curiosity.
Um, well, I mean, you.
I mean, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that, I wanna hear Tom come, uh, group meeting really, you know, possible. Perhaps this true, Mark, because I, I don't think I can make a decision tonight. You know, the other part of it is, you know, we're talking about, we've lost spend it, so it's also, so.
I mean, the challenge becomes, uh, we've applied, so while we made it six out of seven, we have actually applied.
That was a good one.
It's, it's already, the first, there was the original, Jim, correct me if I've got this wrong, but there was an original intent for them to prioritize, but because of the set applied, that first phase was kind of wiped out. The second phase was then the true prioritization for moving forward to pursue the money. And that's where Berlin ended up six out of seven on the list. The challenge becomes, you're coming to the end of this year, we're producing financial statements, and if there is an intent to continue pursuing the grant, then I'll talk to the auditors. If you don't appropriate it, I'll have to come up with some other way, because having eight hundred thousand dollars potentially pulled from unassigned fund balance is something we want to disclose to somebody who might read the financials and think, we're gonna loan this community money. Yeah. What's that?
I don't think that's a problem. I mean, if they wanna, you know, if they say it has to be disclosed as part of the designated fund balance, then so be it. Or assigned fund balance. I don't see it being assigned yet because, uh, until we actually were awarded the grant, there really is no viability. And there's a potential viability, you know, generally, before you're potential.
Well, the intent was apply for the grant and receive it expended. That's why this is come forward. The town's not, we're not just throwing the dart, but the intent was apply for the grant, and if you win the grant, you're going to forward. And so, like other grants, we put the money, we appropriate the money so that it's there in the event we win it. And if we don't, then we remove, we move that money to another place.
Well, we have a flexibility to say we wanna, wanting, after we look at all this, then what makes sense, maybe we wanna spend nine dollars for the grant. Can we do that, or? You know, even.
Oh, that's where the council wants.
That's what they, they, that's what they will. Well, they, they asked the question, could this be modified? And Jim, I'm paraphrasing you, but Jim basically said, I can't guarantee it, but we can go back and tell them we would like to either choose different locations, as we was talking about, Griswold's not on this list. So, can we look at Griswold and maybe not something along Channel Highway or something like that was part of the conversation with council. Jim said, we can certainly have that conversation.
I just.
Well, that doesn't sound nice to give the award, and then you go back and negotiate what you wanna do.
I mean, Jim, how would you respond if we are, if we are fortunate enough to win? Couldn't we modify it?
Yeah, I mean, there's not gonna be, there's not like some grant manual that says you can modify it, you know, but we have experience, and we've done for act, for sidewalk projects in the past, we've modified them, you know, the, you know, T D has worked with us. And, you know, as long as it's consistent, I would say, you know, again, our theme of this grant was safety to school. So, I think you need to be sidewalks near schools. So, if you wanted to build sidewalks on Spruceburg Road, I'd say, they'd say, no, you know. If, if it's some, we're switching out some sidewalks near schools, I think we'll probably, we would probably be granted some flexibility there.
And I, I think that we was talking, talking more about that, you know, you get three point two million, and it'll go, that's a little bit too much to buy off. We really only want a million.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to say. I mean, I, I, Kevin, I, I, Arocha and I were having this discussion this morning after we found out we ranked six out of seven, you know? So, I mean, I, I guess, if, what I would advise is if we want to, you know, if we wanna cut back on our application, and given that we're, you know, six of seven now, I, I would just, you know, let's decide what we do want to apply for, and send a notice to CROG and say, we wanna, we, we wanna reduce our application by so much. And here's, here's the sidewalks we wanna do now. And, you know, maybe, you know, I, it's all strategic thing. There's no, there's no magic, uh, formula, but, you know, can you, you can think like, if we're six of seven, right? Well, and, and maybe some year, you can squeeze in an extra million into, into the state, you know, budget for this program. Well, maybe you have better chance if you're trying to squeeze a million in, and if you're trying to squeeze three point two million in, you know? So, given where we are in the priority rankings, uh, you know, it might, that might be a, a way to, uh, proceed.
Is there a, a guesstimate as when they would award the grant?
Well, it's not gonna be till the twenty twenty sixth to twenty thirty fiscal year. So, yeah, I don't know if, if DOT, we don't know yet, you know, like, CROG is gonna, CROG is gonna make their, you know, again, we're six of seven by the Transportation Policy Committee. Their overall policy committee is gonna be at the end of June, and they'll finalize the CROG list and send it on to, to, you know, DOT. I, I wouldn't think that the policy committee is gonna change the ranking very much. So, I don't think at that step, you know, uh, it's gonna change. Then it goes to DOT, you know, it could take a while, you know?
Jim, do you think?
Face time, you know, again, if it's not till twenty twenty six this year.
Jim, do you think they're gonna send the whole list up with the prioritization, or do you think this next committee will cut and only send a certain number forward to DOT?
What their staff has been telling us is they're planning on sending them all up, you know, but giving, have the, the ones that are not within the nine million dollar allocation as backup projects.
Favor?
Sorry, Jim, it's five zero again.
Okay. All right, well, thanks.
I, I mean, Jim, at this point, our application is in there. If they turned around.
That's right.
And said, you're, you're, you know, everybody else dropped out, you're gonna get it. Maybe we've appropriated the money at that point.
Or if they approve a million.
Right.
Well, the other thing is the council has approved this, so you could put it back on your agenda at any regular meeting and say, if we change our vote, we now like to approve it.
If you hear.
If you hear from this. If it always appropriate. If it helps appropriate money at any time to you.
We have soon.
I do think Mark has a different understanding, a not correct understanding, what latitude he has, what they have with this. At least that's what I got yesterday.
I think they've just, they want us to downsize the project. But they weren't sure how to go about it, they didn't really get a good answer, well, we did you.
I think there were also, there there was a bit of a, I mean, constraint, Jim, when you were at the council, I think we were. I'm gonna say a week out from the application deadline approximately.
Yeah, they had approved that, because they had approved their hard deadline in order to hit that deadline, so I think the council.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, we went to the next county, so, you know. Here's a top. So.
Now, if the if the council approved eight hundred thousand and the grant comes in, let's say one point five million. And our. Our new number would be four hundred thousand. Can we just modify what the council already did, only approve four hundred thousand of that, or we have to go back through that?
I would think so, but I'd have to confirm the, the, I would think you could approve something.
That's a part of it, so we could just do a quick meeting if we have to.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll do the best.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Jim, appreciate.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Bye.
Okay, move to approve a transfer of fifty six thousand dollars into the public buildings generator account in the Capital Nine Recurring Fund. From the D E E P Silver Lake Account, twenty five thousand dollars, and the Economic Development Fund. Community Connectivity Grant Account, nineteen thousand four hundred, Economic Development Fund, Storm Related Overtime, eleven thousand six hundred.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. With a favor?
I.
I'm moved.
Move to approve the transfer from non-taxable election workers for four thousand one hundred dollars and supplies for three thousand dollars to the elected personnel for six thousand eight hundred. Workers' compensation for seventy five dollars and social security for five hundred twenty five dollars, your total amount of seven thousand four hundred. To cover additional hours worked by the registrars of voters.
Second. Second discussion.
So, one of the issues, I. It's, this isn't about the money to me right now, this is about policy. Going forward. This is getting kicked down the road kinda from the. Town manager to the town council, and then dumped on us like you guys decide. This is a policy decision, we don't decide policy. Okay, we we decide finances. I I really think this needs to go back to the town council, and they have to decide and figure out what they're gonna do with this.
I I was not following, I'm sorry.
So, right now, the registrars of voters are are quote unquote kinda salary. And and they're with the new um. Early voting thing like that, the number of hours that they now have to work compared to the twenty hours that they are sort of embedded in that. What is thirty thousand dollars or whatever.
Their salary.
Their salary, and and they want justifiably recognition. That this is what's gonna happen, but this is another expenditure um that we have to figure out what. How they're gonna handle.
Whether it's a stipend or.
Whether it's a stipend, whether it's an hourly rate or whatever, whether their base salary is kicked up, whatever. Earlier discussions and were that, you know, they. They receive a partial stipend or part of it in a stipend. For the work they did in the early voting before, and then the conversation with Aroch and so forth was that we. Take a little bit of time, aggregate, you know, keep track of everything. Figure out really what was going on and and what was going to take.
Is this the ten thousand dollar? Or around the ten thousand dollars that was the.
The stuff.
No, this is on top of that.
One five hundred dollar per registrar stipend in the current fiscal year that you would agree to at a previous budget, I mean, has been paid.
Yeah, okay.
The ten thousand dollar stipend per registrar is in the budget that you just adopted last night.
All right.
This is on top of it for hours worked in this fiscal year with the intent of paying for it out of. Surplus money within the registrar's budget for work done this fiscal year.
Yeah, I don't have a compliance perspective approving it, I'm just asking who approved this? And the answer is nobody.
This is, this is one of the things. This is really what's got me locked up with this too, is the fact that we're taking. Oh. A salary position. And we're allowing them to track extra hours. And then pay them extra hours that they feel that they work, but maybe just to buy this up, okay? So where's that leave us with every other salaried employee at town hall? If they find money in their budget, can they award themselves an extra stipend? I I some, this is a policy decision.
No, I do, I.
That's not our. It's not our thing.
I'm not entirely close to that.
And there you go, thank you.
So what happens is unfortunately right now, they're getting caught in the middle. Of this.
Well, we're caught.
The level now.
I understand that, I I understand that, I mean, if they had said. You know, we're gonna, you know, because of that, we still need to sort this whole thing out, we we. Approve a stipend for them on a certain amount, but the way this is structured. It is setting a precedent that we're gonna start paying overtime for salary. Equivalent mid 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 level managers, I. And I'm not worried, it's not the money I have an issue with, I don't, I think they deserve it, but they should, they either need to. Sort this out or give them another stipend to to make up, I understand fiscal year crossover. I I just don't think this is the way to do it personally.
Kevin. And and all the other, you know, departments or person like yourself. What is, what is the rule when you work extra time?
You work. You work extra time. The assumption is I'm salary exempt, which means. If I work one hour or I work a hundred hours in a week, my pay is is the same. That's.
And that is.
That's the.
The drawback and benefit.
And that's not just here, I mean, salary exempt, that's, that's, it was that way when I was in private, when, when I was in private, the hope would be that. You would be rewarded with a bonus, stock, or something else that would recognize, not not hour for hour, if you weren't submitting a timesheet, it was a recognition that, hey, you did a lot of work, you helped the organization. But when you're in, when you're in a public sector. Position, you recognize that a bonus is not happening, stock is certainly not, there is no stock, so you know. Kind of, I don't go in, don't get, don't get a big switch.
The problem that this particular position. Brings up is that they are elected as well, so that's another wrinkle because. You you, someone in H R who would say this is the way it should be. May or may not necessarily be able to say that because they are elected, and they they don't answer to. Anyone but the electorate.
This one.
Has William Arocha be keeping us up on that? But I don't really answer to him, I I, you know, I don't.
That's on employees.
Yeah, that was the challenge.
There's employees, but those are.
The town manager, the town manager felt that the stipend setup that was brought forward. Was appropriate, so the town manager said, I I do not agree with paying the extra amount. Um they did not feel that was fair. And so the recourse as elected official was bring it to the council because. Uh the town manager has, I guess, some level of administrative oversight, you're in the town hall, and there's certain rules to follow. Um but ultimately, they're not employees, so. Ultimately, the decisions that have been made around benefits, around minimum required work hours, all of these have always been. Between the registrars and the mayor through the years. Um going back, I I I have gone all the way back, but I know there was a whole discussion. Back probably four or five years ago about health insurance, and we found it began when uh. Bob Peters was the strong mayor at the time. And it goes back back far, and then it had Kerry Foner, but it was always the mayor's. Ultimate decision, typically they would discuss with the town manager and others, they would just do it in isolation. There is one other little twist here, whether that changes your mind or not, is. Typically, when you have a salary position, you know, as I said, when I came in, there's no bait and switch, I knew here's what the position. They had a legislatively mandated, or maybe you could say voter mandated, because it did go to. To the voters and a change in the constitution that materially changed the the way they operate. Um so the position they ran for the last election. You could argue materially changed, number of hours materially changed, I don't know the role itself, but the number of hours required with the early voting materially changed. Um ti- typically, when you do that, you try to accommodate. The town manager's just view on that was. Let's do a stipend the first year because yes, it's changed, and we just don't know how much. You're walking into probably, correct, if I'm wrong. The the most difficult year for that, because one, it's the first year, first year of anything is difficult, second is presidential election. Potential presidential primary, I have no idea why, but you know, that type of thing, you had all of these different elections, so. This would arguably be the most expensive year. Um so the the debate that kind of went back and forth was, okay, I hear what you're saying. Town manager, and you wanna actually have some experience before making a permanent salary decision. On the flip side, it was you're asking to gain that experience in the most difficult year, and how are we gonna behave? That's the quandary here.
I don't have a, I I don't have a problem paying them for hours that they've already worked, but I. I share the same problem that George does, are we setting a precedent? In a way that will come back to haunt us, and I don't know the answer.
It's only because of the way it's kind of worded, I think, is the problem. I mean, if they approved the a a stipend in the same amount for, you know, all their hard work, I would have an issue with that, to say.
And I thought the stipend had come out of um. Savings from the department. So, I mean, I I don't see how we can just walk it in the back of the.
So what was the base of the twenty five hundred? Twenty five hundred, the last, the way I understood it was. Give them the stipend twenty five hundred, and then we'll see what your goals, is that what it was?
You 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 had said, come back after November election, you'll have a full calendar year.
So what has Aroch decided, has he rejected this decrease basically?
He was not in favor of this motion, but because they're not employees and elected. He directed that you should go to the town council and let the town council, because they are the legislative policy setting body of the town. So, you know, you should go forward to that.
We knew the twenty five hundred wasn't going to work, once. The um presidential primary wasn't going, he was afraid we wouldn't have a presidential primary or election, so he didn't wanna. Prepay us, not knowing that we were gonna actually have to work it. So when we told him that we have to be available to it, and these were all pre talks, like it wasn't gonna be. That's why we said this year almost requires a full time salary. So we knew. To keep, we were advised to keep track of the hours to submit them, because we told they, we told them the twenty five hundred was not in the charter, if this fall went forward, and it did go forward. So that's why we're back at this, because of keep track of the hours on top of the stipends, because your goal was it gonna be enough to cover it. And that's how how we proposed it.
And because the fiscal year is ending at the end of June. We only processed the extra hours from January, from the beginning of the year till now. And that's how, that's why we have the calculation on the hours, tracking the hours. And we've supplied all of that to the.
And we had this concern after November before it even came into play, when we submitted our budgets. Um and this is, he he turned it down, and so this has been, why it's been talked about so much, because. Not knowing.
Yeah.
Of the year, and we knew it was a big. Hour, it was a whole job change, you're going from a five day election to twenty five days election mode. That's a huge increase, it's not just hours, it's responsibilities that were added. And additional changes with changing up the presidential primary as well. So now the training, the staffing, the hiring, everything is just so much more. It was a big job change.
I just have a question, uh just back to the the status, you know, salary exempt, et cetera, not employees. Um are they paid as employees, so subject to so- social security and?
Yes, but we don't get, yeah, there's benefits, we don't get time and half, we don't get overtime.
Why are they treated as employees if they're not employees? As far as social security.
It's just a matter.
Or is that a state law?
From an IRS perspective, from how they will, how they operate would be considered employee. We dictate the location for the work, we dictate. Uh we have the specific space for them, we provide the equipment, we. You may not necessarily be called an employee where you are, but the IRS often will identify folks as you are employees. However, the requirement has been that they're required to work up to twenty hours, and I don't know that that stayed, the twenty hours was tied into, you're going to receive. Health insurance. And you needed to work twenty hours, since that came into effect, and I'm uh Bob Peters was a strong mayor. I think, so since that time, that number has been elevated to thirty hours to qualify for health insurance, that's just a requirement in the town. So their hours don't reach that threshold, so they're treated as employees, but essentially. Salary exempt employees, so they're paid the same rate. Every single, every two weeks, there's no submission of time, there's no even tracking of time off, ultimately, they work what they work. And they're paid that amount.
It's a, I mean. Yeah, I mean. I mean, I, again, I don't have a problem with the extra effort and payment, but. Now we're basically saying, for the balance of the year, we're gonna pay on an hourly basis, pretty much. We don't, you know what I'm saying, I, I mean, this is a salary position. And I don't know how to say that we're gonna pay hourly for the rest of the year, that's why we started with a stipend, you know what I'm saying, that. Uh I mean, how do we commit to an hour, basically what we're saying is hourly for the rest of the year.
Anything over.
Understand that, but it's still, you know, in fact, it's an hourly.
Yeah, because he didn't want to do a salary decrease for us, and that's what we asked.
We, we would have afforded salary increases without benefits of pension.
So I don't think that that's what.
Yeah, because this, I mean, maybe we could. We could take an action based on this transaction, I mean. Us doing it here doesn't mean we're doing anything different other than paying ten thousand stipend. In the next fiscal year.
All right, I'm okay with that, you know, what we gotta say is this is subject to a review and, you know, policy change, and we can. We can give them this amount for this this period, but we can't promise anything beyond that in whole policy.
Well, nothing's, nothing's been appropriated, so it would have to come back to us again anyways.
Yeah, well, the ten thousand dollars is in the budget, then we'll get that stipend, three installments next.
Yeah, so.
Ten thousand, the ten thousand eight? That you're talking from state, that was, that was.
No, it's it's ten thousand dollar stipend for fiscal year twenty five.
So maybe we should just. Do this one, um and pass it on to the manager that we wanna have. You know, a process in place, I mean, we we gotta know whether we're, whether we're, yeah.
I mean, I hate to be extreme, but what if they don't work twenty hours, do we, do we, did they give us twenty hours back, I mean, I I don't wanna, you know.
Yes, the other registrars, when it wasn't quite so busy, they were never working twenty hours a week. And yet they got paid for twenty hours theoretically, because that was just the way, but it was a.
That's not like that anymore.
If I may, if I may.
I did, but it'd be up.
Back when I started this position, which was in twenty twenty. Um I myself had started to track hours, because I thought I was here a little bit longer than I should be. And I had kept a chart, and I had held that chart for about eighteen months. And I submit, when I did my calculation and took the average of how many hours I worked for a week. And even though sometimes it felt before below twenty, there were times where it's excelled to fifty and sixty three hours a week. And then it would come down to forty two, so overall average, just so you know, in that eighteen months, it was twenty point nine hours a week. That's what the overall average was, so um. I I would not have asked the town manager for a raise, I would not have asked. The town council for a raise if I didn't think that our department was truly worth the effort. Um and and I understand where you're coming from, and I think, and I appreciate the perspective, because you do. You do, you are the keepers of the cash. Um and we as registrars, I think, would much prefer. To know how much we're gonna bring home every other week, as opposed to. I I feel as if we're begging, at the council, we're begging everybody to hear what's going on, but. You know, I mean, we all live within our budgets, and we do the best we can, but um I would hope. That as they go forward, um the policy would be. To get off of the stipend and to honestly just look at a salary increasing and just say.
Policy decision, right, that's what I'm advocating, that's what I'm saying, I mean, the other thing is, I think there has to be a little bit of conversation about, you know.
How 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 best to leverage the dollars that are in the budget to get the work done. Um, you guys, and I'm not saying you do, but you shouldn't be doing everything, okay? So you may be doing a lot of stuff today that we should be having deputy registrars, or even, I know you have some, but I've also. Had conversations before where you've had issues where like you had to come in because a deputy registrar didn't want to take the responsibility. Well, to me, that's okay, you have the wrong deputy registrar, okay, why, why should? I I'll pick numbers, why pay somebody, you know, forty dollars or thirty dollars an hour if I can get that level of work done at fifty dollars an hour or twenty dollars an hour type of deal? We we need to be smart about the limited money that we have too, and and that we need to turn to you guys, because you guys are the bosses of that. You know, so if.
We are seeing the same thing, because it is, we are on the ballot this year. And we are supposed to negotiate our terms, and before signing my paperwork, I asked, like, can we? Uh, you know, how am I gonna get paid for this new term coming in? And this is when you do have to open a discussion, but going back to your point, who do we discuss this with, we've been trying to make headway through them. That this is what has to happen in our department. And before we take on a new term, this is when this should be all ironed out as well, so we are both saying the same things.
Well, to me, that's the town council, but it's it's out of board of finding.
They approve contracts, right, I mean, so this, that to me is a contract.
But but to your point, um, Commissioner Miller, um. We do. We are looking at our deputies and our layer of workers beyond that, which the state now requires another unfunded mandate that we have. And so we are looking to bring them more on board. Um, and and to and to couple up that problem. We have a problem with physical space in the office, because we can, we only have our computers and two others. If we're gonna bring in another two people to to work at a third level. And we have no desks, we have no space, and we've also sounded that alarm to the town council saying. You know, th- this department, especially with early voting, and I have no idea what November is gonna look like. Because this is, this room here is gonna be locked down for like fifteen days. Because this is gonna be early voting and nobody else is gonna be allowed in, but it's gonna, I I think it's gonna be messy. And we're gonna try to keep it as polite and organized as we can, but I I think in order for us to have our full staff. We need to get like a real office, that was like.
The mail.
We are drawing a mail.
We are, we're drawing a lot, and I mean, so to further complicate things, we we also found that on our horizon. But, anyway.
All right, so it goes in favor?
I.
Thank you.
I move to make a motion to transfer three. Hundred ninety seven thousand, three hundred ninety dollars and sixteen cents. As detailed in the accompanying spreadsheet to be attached, the minutes to cover your end transfers and the identifying. So I guess you ladies don't have to stay.
Okay.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Yeah. Um, let me just, I have made a note.
I move, move, make a motion to accept the suspense list of two hundred twenty six thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars, twenty four cents, as detailed in the accompanying reports.
Okay, sure. Discussion. It was a favor?
I. May George go back for four minutes, what?
Go ahead.
I I guess like. Three hundred ninety seven, I understand that it's a, a net zero type of deal, but. I I unfortunately, I did not get the opportunity to go through the list, but I, you know, when we were going. Over budget in certain areas, and if they're at over certain thresholds, how do those get approved? Type of deal, I mean, how how does, how do these, what types of things are, I I guess are causing? Four hundred thousand dollars worth of overruns.
They have ex- explanations.
I, in in this, yeah, it's unfortunate, I'm gonna show that, sorry, just like I said, it's just.
At four.
Okay.
There's there's little explanations to do it, a bunch of your overnight shopping needs.
The the biggest areas would be in facilities, both school facility and public buildings. Biggest driver that is deferred maintenance causing more things, uh, breakdowns. Doug, Doug is actually, Doug Solik is actually on the line, um, if you want more specific.
I'll look through the list, I just.
But that's, you know, there's a hundred thousand each between the schools and the buildings, so because of. Both operating materials, so that's kind of things that the the in-house crew would then use to do word. Contractual services hiring, for example, just the last. Two days, we've had folks out here patching and doing work up on the roof here and. Um, and when we first picked on. Use very basic layman's terms, that can probably give it more clarity, but when we first kicked air conditioning on for here, there was a problem with the chiller, so they had to. Um, you know, they had to work on on that, and sometimes it's materials, if our in-house folks do it. Uh, we do have an HVAC position posted, so we have one person who's kind of doing double duty, so sometimes it's contractual services that.
Kevin, I can clarify a few things, just briefly, just for clarification. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we just, we had a lot of breakdowns this year, a lot of the high school is the biggest driver for sixty one. We're close to seventy thousand dollars in expenditures for contracted service agreements along with. Pump repairs, additional work on the chillers, the chillers and the pumps and all the infrastructure is ten years old right now. Everything was put in two thousand thirteen, so it's been an extensive maintenance program annually, which our budget supports. But we're at that point in a ten year cycle where things require. Major repairs, and same thing with town hall, the town hall chiller is ten years old, for two thousand thirteen. It's under an annual contract, gets extensive maintenance, but it's just that ten year cycle that we we saw a lot of breakdowns this year with. Repairs outside of our normal maintenance and preventive maintenance work, so everything kind of accumulated this year. This department sixty one contractual was reduced eighty thousand at the beginning of fiscal year, so. We've seen that need for it, and that's what we advocated for during the budget process, is that we have aging infrastructure, we have a lot of expensive equipment to maintain. We we do it to the best of our ability, both in-house and with contracted support, but there's a lot of infrastructure to maintain. And the cost of goods and services reflects that in this budget. And our shortfall this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
I'm six. Um, just question first, Kevin, when I read this motion, do you want me to put your amounts in? Um, this is on the grants, HVAC grant.
You can, if you want, this is right out of council, but it is well, either way.
Okay, well, I don't know if. It's because you need it, that there sets limits or. You know. About the numbers.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to include them.
Okay. Move to receive the Griswold HVAC grant in the amount of. One million, two hundred forty three thousand, nine hundred twenty eight dollars and seventy one cents. Into the state and federal grants account and appropriate to the state. HVAC grant account in the Griswold HVAC fund. Move to receive the Hubbard HVAC grant, amount of. One million, eight hundred ninety five thousand, five hundred eighty nine dollars and forty six cents. Into the state and federal grants account and appropriate to the state HVAC grant account in Hubbard HVAC fund.
Second.
Sure.
Discussion. On the paper? Great, Kevin. Um. There's a couple of things to talk to you, but I will just very quickly on financial status report. Things are closing out well, largely as expected, um. The pension funds, it are both. In solid position, the closed plan, the exposed, the ninety percent funded, so we continue to be strong there. Even the new plan, knowing that we have shortfall from the buy-ins, is still quite solid at eighty five percent funded, so. Both are in a good position. Um, as far as the risks and opportunities, absolutely, we'll remove the eight hundred thousand at the bottom, that was put in here in anticipation. So that will come out, and then those numbers at the bottom, based on the FY twenty type of budget, would actually go up. The percentage would increase from there, um. So if there's no questions, we'll go on to a couple of other topics, you're sure?
Okay.
Um, I want to make you guys aware of, next Tuesday, there will be a public hearing, and then. On on one of the bond ordinances of both, and then the other two will be voted on on the eleventh of of July. But there were three bond ordinances brought forward, these are in support of the. Items that we were listed in the budget proposal, so you're probably five items listed. One was the H, well, for the two HVAC projects together, there was already bond ordinances. Approved, that was required for the state grant, there was money included to pay off the balance owed on the police station construction. Again, bond ordinance already existed. The remaining three did not have ordinances, so there's debt service to fund the interest payments, and then we'll start principal payments at fiscal year twenty six. The first was to do a redo Berlin High School track, we resurfaced it a couple of times, if the track was actually constructed in the mid nineties. So after thirty years, it's rolling up on the side. The school, the schools had approached the superintendent of grounds, identifying the problem, asking the district. The ordinance on that particular one was expanded to include. Uh, basically a second tranche, back in twenty twenty, we did the first athletic facilities brand. I'm sorry, athletic facilities bond, and that is to fund stage one, the softball field being completely redone. It was to fund Percival Field, which is now completed and and has been redone. Uh, as well as renovations to the. Uh, restrooms at Scully's Field that needed to be upgraded, there's about a hundred ninety thousand dollars left on that one, so it's not enough to do the track. So this is a request to do a new, another one, so we would use that first hundred ninety thousand plus requesting this money. The idea behind this, the reason the number is here, and it was expanded out to include. More broadly athletic facilities, including buildings and other. Uh, ancillary items or things that are adjacent to fields, including timberland, is to provide flex building. In the event something is is needed. Um, Timberland in particular has two issues, one, bridges that really need to be replaced, there's a lot of regulatory requirements because it's a flood plain. But that really needs to be done, for the second time in the last decade, the bunkers were. Just for lack of a better word, devastated by a storm. And we have insurance money, um, and there's an opportunity to replace them with the insurance money in kind. Uh, but in evaluating, and because it's the second time, we've had a substantial six figure advantage on to those. The idea was, do we finally address? Putting the right bunkers in for modern day and potentially removing some bunkers and replacing. Doesn't mean that the bonding has to be used for that, but it's another thing this could be used for. Up to two and a half million dollars, you're gonna pay the same price to the attorneys for developing the ordinance. So rather than coming in and saying, can we have five hundred thousand or a million dollars, and then we'll go do the track, the idea here was. Put the two million dollar ordinance out there, doesn't mean you have to, you don't have to borrow, you don't ever have to borrow if you don't want to, we have. Open space ordinances that have been around for, I'd say fifteen or twenty years. Um, that are still on the books, so that in the event the town has an opportunity to purchase open space, you already have that in place. So that's why the two million is in here, it is more than what the track was for. But the idea was, it's in the town's best interest to try to think multiple years, multiple projects, if you're gonna pay the same price, try to get the most for it. The.
Can I just make a comment on that too? You'll remember, we had already approved at one point to do the bridges. Through a grant, and that's, there's been so many regulatory issues at this point, that. That project is going nowhere at this point, and. Some of those regulatory issues were because of the grant that we were going to use, right, so. This then also gives us the flexibility to move forward with that, but put it in the bond issue instead. And then free up those grant monies for something else.
I heard some other poor engineers got dragged into it.
Yeah, because it's in a flood.
So that, like, Army Corps, because it's a state grant, deep is involved, and then. The the easiest one, and I don't mean that personally, like they're easy to work with, but the easiest one to navigate through would be the local and the wetlands, because they're all. So it's gonna be much easier to have a meeting and have a discussion, this is one of many, many projects, and. No offense, I'm a golfer, but, you know, putting seven bridges on a golf course is going to pale in comparison to a major bridge structure. You know, crossing a major river, so they have to prioritize. But Spur's works been out there, it was approved the same night as Farmington Avenue Bridge, and Farmington Avenue Bridge didn't sail along as an easy project, and Spur's work still hasn't started. So that tells you when the Army Corps is involved, it can take years sometimes. Um, so the second one that's out there is one point one million for roof replacements. Uh, that's actually for two roofs, it's for this roof as well as the library, uh, community center. The last four roofs we've done over the last five, six years were all done because they were leaking. Um, not what we wanted to do, but unfortunately, this roof is is actually leaking as well. If you've had the. Opportunity, I'll say, to go into the assessor's office in the last two, three months, you'll see that we renovated, it was. Uh, long overdue security upgrades, as well as expanding out. Storage area for the town clerk, that was something we requested for a while, we're trying to come up with a less expensive way to accommodate adding space for cable for vital records. And so reconfiguring the the assessors allows the assessors cables to be opened up for use by the town clerk, and free up that space at a lower cost. Point being that the tiles on the ceiling is part of that will be done. The tiles right now are stained in several parts, because it's actually leaking down in, so you you have an active, I I don't mean it's gushing, like we're putting buckets down, but. The fact that you have essentially branded tiles and they're already stained, and it, the stains on the tile are nothing, but it's an indication of the problem. So we went out, Doug actually went out and worked with Al Zbunzki and Zbunzki and Holmes and secured. Quotes, uh, there's contingency built in, there's also assumed escalators if we do this, and. So four hundred thousand of the one point one million is assumed for the town hall roof. That includes a fifteen percent contingency as well as a five percent escalator, with the assumption that it would be done in the summer of twenty five. Um. The second one would be the library roof, that's assumed to be about seven hundred thousand dollars, hence the one point one million. That's assumed to have a two year escalator would be done in twenty twenty six. And the one thing I also remind you that I did to the council, when it comes to the library. The town invested substantial money redoing the carpeting. Long overdue, but it did a great job, uh, the tables and chairs and other things in Blanche Delaney have been redone. And we are waiting delivery, it's likely gonna be in August now, um, for the sheltering, the children's section to be redone. Put in all of that money to redo it, and then run the risk of having a leak from the ceiling. Damage what you just spent all that money to do, um. This led to this, we're we're trying to address these before we have any real damage. The third one, and this is the one that we would need to have a, potentially have a special meeting, and I'll go into more detail, is one point three million for the police radios. We talked last meeting about the police radios and a variety of things, so, um, we have an official quote from Motorola. It will be going to the council on Thursday, so, again, the ordinance will have a public hearing and a vote, and the. The council is gonna be asked to waive rule seven, which essentially says, vote on it the next meeting after the public hearing. To waive that and vote at this meeting, um, if you were to turn to page. You were to turn to page five dash forty three, it's section five point one way in the back. It's the pricing section. You'll see that there's an incentive price, which was just offered, and that's why they have a rush here. The the plan, this has been in work since before, the budget was done, but the plan are moving quicker. If the purchase order, if they receive a purchase order by June twenty fifth. So before your next meeting, um, they are offering incentive of a hundred twenty five thousand dollars on the price. If it is done after that. Then, you know, if it's done after, that would drop to seventy five thousand dollars. Still a good amount of money, but it's worth fifty thousand dollars to move more quickly. Um, there is, you guys won't be voting on the project, that's a council decision, but you have. The detailed pricing behind it and and an extensive. It's an extensive proposal. The other thing I'll draw your attention to that's involved here is on page. One dash five up in the front, there is section one point four. One dash five up in the front, there is section one point four point three, logging recorder subsystem. Essentially, the system we have has to be upgraded, and so that's the second thing that you have there that says event tied next laws. This is the proposal to do that, um, about eighteen, roughly twenty thousand dollars on top of what was in here. So we've asked for a bond ordinance of one point three million. Um. This is a substantial portion of that. The police will be asking for authorization to spend up to the one point three million. So that as they get going on this project, if something comes up between. These two amounts and the one point three million, they can move forward and not have to delay the project further. Um, this is as a reminder to, to eliminate the gaps or the, the dead spots in town, so to speak. Um, you're, if the council approves it on the eighteenth of their next meeting. You would need to approve the bond ordinance by the twenty-fifth in order for the PO to be issued. Because the ordinance is not only authorizing the borrowing, but it actually is an appropriation of the money. So at that point, I'd have an appropriation and then be able to pull a purchase order for the net amount and sent and notify Motorola. So that we can take advantage of it. Um. So with that, I don't know if you guys are available on the twenty-four, on Monday, the twenty-fourth, it can be. If you're good with it, there's very specific wording, but it's the same wording we've done with other bond ordinances. It can be done by Zoom in a few minutes, this would be a special meeting, only this topic, but to be able to move forward. Um, and I noticed the chief is on, so if you have any questions on the project or the necessity to do this. Um, if, if I spoke like I knew what I was doing.
No, I mean.
He, he will, he will have a lot more.
I was just very happy to hear that they physically took a portable radio. Put it in a cruiser and drove down.
Generally worded free is to, to show the American people that the family takes so much responsibility. And has so much remorse because.
Chief, I think you got a lot of background noise. Sorry, you were saying, I'm sorry, they took.
Yeah, they, they actually, um, they took one of the radios the state police used. And they went down to all the dead spots and they put portable in a cruiser, which is the hardest thing to do.
Mm-hmm.
To, to transmit out through a cruiser and they worked fine everywhere, so I felt real comfortable about that.
And we can do it anytime on the twenty-fourth or whatever works for you, so like I said, you're assuming you're good with it, I mean, you, you don't have to vote in favor certainly. And you certainly don't have to move at that pace. Seventy-five thousand savings is substantial. Um, just, it wasn't less than what we have possible.
I mean, let me ask a question, um. Who's managing it from, uh, from the top, from the police side, you know?
Uh, definitely.
Have a subject matter expert to make sure that whatever stuff we implement is kinda.
Yeah.
Run off properly or whatever, you know, I guess, you know?
I wouldn't say the, the necessarily a radio subject matter expert, but a policing and who's how down there. The two people that I've been talking with mostly about this have been Deputy Chief Gallup and Lieutenant Martin. Um, chief, is that fair to say that they would be your two point people? The deputy chief and lieutenant Martin?
Yes, and uh, as far as subject matter experts, none of us are subject matter experts. So we've been relying a lot on um, some of the outside sources. I do sit on a, a committee for the state that has to deal with the state uh, nine-one-one system and all too, so. I've asked questions of some of the people that know a lot more about radios and communications than anybody in our building does.
Thank you. Let me just, you know, last time we, we thought we had the system that was working and. You know, something happened there, so I'm just trying to make sure we don't have any gaps.
Nobody said anything for nine years.
Okay, so.
And we've been fortunate, so there hasn't been a major issue because of it.
Lucky.
Yeah, very fortunate, but being able to address it. Um, nobody's dispute, it's a lot of money, everybody recognizes that it's a lot of money, um.
Like, so, I, I know Timmy mentioned I took, they took portable radio and went to the spots, whatever. I, I think one of the issues that just bothers me a little bit, just coming from where I come from, North and Utility, is like. There's no, no statement of the, there's no problem statement here. And there's nothing in the acceptance testing that said, that talks about coverage whatsoever. So I know they're gonna do all this, but there's nothing that says that it, it, that they will resolve any of our problems, if they're our problem, so. What if new, what if it causes new holes? Cause this is kind of like a wholesale upgrade for the whole system. To switch over from what they do, I'm, I'm, I'm not really that familiar, I'm not understanding that. Is everything going on the state towers?
Yes.
So we're not, no longer using our towers for our radios?
Correct. Well, when we still, our towers would still exist, our.
Go ahead.
Our towers still exist, it's just that we don't, what we have now, if we go to the state radio system on their system. We will have full coverage, because we'll be using a tower in Middletown, our tower is a tower in uh, New Britain. Which covers all the dead spots, especially that, um, the south side of town. All along the Chamberlain Highway, below Orchard Road in that area where we have like very limited reception. Ragged mountain, very limited reception. Um, getting on the state system gets us on the Middletown Tower, and that saves us from having to build another tower. Which was one of the reasons why we were looking at the two, two differences and um, in order to get on the state system. We needed to really have our uh, equipment. Functional, and I guess the biggest problem, one of the biggest problems we had is prior to my arrival here is. They weren't updating the stuff that you purchased uh, in the past. There was no updating, no hardware or firmware updates. And we're sixteen or seventeen behind with the uh, company that we had, which was Utility, and that's why we, we got out of Utility last year. Um, and so it's kind of like this whole package deal. To Motorola had to be involved so we could get onto the state, cause they have the contract with the state.
And, and the state has no dead spots in Berlin?
I don't know.
No, if with this. Yeah, once we went with the radio, you were talking about how we went around with the portable radio in the cars. We went to places that we normally didn't have radio reception using one of the Motorola, um. State program radios, and we turned on the state towers plus our towers, and we had no um, issues anywhere.
As long as you're comfortable with it. It would, it would have been nice as a final check, you know, that somebody sort of guaranteeing when you're all said and done and all the work is done. That it all works the way you envisioned it and there's no glitches, because there's nothing in the acceptance testing to that degree. And that's the main.
I, I don't think you would see that in this.
For the upgrade is coverage.
This is a proposal, this isn't a contract.
Yeah, you're not gonna see that in this proposal, you would see that in the state's contract. After we do this, that we get in, the, the state has, is, they're sitting on, on the sidelines watching to make sure that we can get this done. And then they'll jump right in, and that's where we would get that, um. You know, agreements, because we have to do MOUs and all still, but we know we'd get them. Um, and then you'd see it in writing there on those documents. I can tell you, if we go to the state system, it's not just um, in the town of Berlin. But we could go to all our adjoining towns, we can talk to all the other systems. Right now, we can't do that. And so we have officers working in Berlin, as you go by on these rural jobs and all, you see New Britain, you see Southington, you might see Cromwell. All our radios are not interoperable. Most of them are on the state system or are going to the state system. I know Southington's making that move now, and they've asked to jump on board. With us when we get to the state system, so we have interoperability. I mean, you know what, they've been talking about this since nine eleven across the country, it just never, it's never come to fruition. So we're kind of hitting about three birds with one stone with, with this project.
So are you, is there a particular time?
Yes, we're trying. Six, six. Six is right. Yeah.
I will notice a Zoom meeting, it should be pretty quick. Um.
It's gonna be just for that one.
Just that one, that one. That's obviously contingent on the council, except, um, I did have a conversation with the mayor last night, and he. He understood, he understood the necessity to move to take advantage of the money, so I expect that will happen, but until they vote, there's. Possible.
Great, yes, thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good night.
Motion to adjourn? Get the motion to adjourn. Favor? Thank you, everyone.